I plead with allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Counselor Crum, present. Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Coles. Here. Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Sturts.
Here.
All members are present, we have a call.
Motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes?
So moved.
Is that it?
Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Allen. Counselor Matthews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Coles.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Sturts.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero knees, motion carries.
Anybody out there like to speak? Mr. Rick Frye? No? Okay. On committee reports, personnel.
We had a personnel committee meeting to discuss, this was January 31st, to discuss the vacant position of the Assistant Chief for Lausanne Police. Chief Torbit stated that he said that he would keep that position vacant as a cost savings for a year, and it's thirteen months at this point, and he has reapproached council to see if they would be willing to allow him to have an Assistant Chief. He has been doing the work of both Chief and Assistant Chief. He would like to have this person work, you do have a report, and he would like to have this person work Friday through Tuesday so that there's coverage on the weekends, there would be a supervisor available then on the weekends that way, and the shift would be from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That was a little different from the previous position. This position would also fill in for Chief Torbit while he is on vacation or out of the area. This would be posted from within, and if he promotes from within, there would not be an additional position that would be posted to replace whomever would be, would just be for that one position. Anybody have any questions at this point, or Chief, would you like to add anything to that?
Basically, I'm just looking to promote someone from within the department, I'm not looking to hire an additional body, so there isn't going to be an additional expense except for the additional increase in salary for that one position.
Will all officers be eligible?
Anyone that meets the criteria.
And of your officers, how many meet those criteria?
Oh, probably four or five, shape. I'm not sure if all four or five are taken, but they have to have at least ten years' experience with Lausanne first of all.
With Lausanne?
With Lausanne. I figured if they put ten years there, they should, they would have at least the experience to do the position.
Will this be a board approved or appointed, or just yourself and the mayor?
I'm going to have the, a couple of the other area chiefs and sheriff, members of the personnel committee, as well as the mayor, look over the test, figure out who they feel is the best, and then possibly sit down with myself and the other chiefs and interview the top candidates at that point. Basically looking at someone that could possibly take my position when I retire, so the city can hire within, and have someone ready to go in the event of something unforeseen happening.
And how long do you think this is going to take before you might have Assistant Chief in place?
I would hope, it shouldn't take more than a couple of months, I don't think.
So personnel committee is bringing that recommendation to council.
Any other questions? Motion to accept the Personnel Committee's recommendations?
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion made by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Allen. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Coles?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero knees, motion carries.
Now are you going to post that?
I'll post it tomorrow.
I will go on the department heads' reports. Start off with Dave. Well, I've been still doing some outreach and getting to know people in the community, so that's going to be an ongoing thing for the next few months, next year, probably next few years, probably the whole time that I'm working. I've been working with the Formula Grant for the 401 North Fulton Street property, asking questions about securing some RLF funds, city RLF funds, so we can move on with that demolition of that property. That seems to be moving forward smoothly, we've got some documentation submitted to the state for approval of a waiver to release those funds, so hopefully we'll know about that here within the next week or so. Also been working with Don's Automotive Group, Don Hayati has submitted an RLF application to try to get some funds secured to update his shelter service area through his dealership. So I'm helping him go through that process to see if it's something that he wants to tackle going through the monitoring and all that for, to secure those funds. Everything looks good so far with that, I've talked to the state about that, so I think we can pick one, approve that and move through that application. Also been working on our end of year reporting to the city also, so I figure that's the true.
David, I do have a question on that, the Formula Grant, is there going to be any additional funding available through that grant for 401 North Fulton?
For the Formula Grant? As far as I know, no, we've expended all of that.
Okay.
So they're tapping into the city RLF ones to, for relocating purposes of the tenant that's in property and, you know, the fees that are associated with that. And there has been a breakdown of those funds.
Okay, but that's a loan, correct?
The RLF, it's money that the city has already allocated to, that they have, but they can just take, it qualifies, so they can use that money to do that. So it's not actually a loan, they're not loaning it to themselves, they're just able to use it for those activities.
Okay.
Chief?
Well, I do have my end of the year report done and in two. Hopefully got it in there before anybody else, I know John was really pushing to get it in there first. Also, I want to thank Dennis and Dave and the guys from Public Works for the assistance that they've done with our office, they're doing some painting and they're redoing the floors down in the dispatch room right now, saving us quite a bit of money to get those done with the Public Works personnel. Also, since we have had a light winter and it is snowing, I want to remind the citizens about the different levels of snow emergency that we have, it's a little bit different from the county. A level one snow emergency means that you're not allowed to park on city streets. Basically, if you have more than two inches of snow, we're under a level one. We will announce it, but we ask people to keep their cars off city streets so the clouds can get through and get them cleaned up, and that's usually in place for twenty-four hours after it's been put in place. A level two is basically when the snow clouds are having a difficult time keeping up, we're asking the people to stay off the streets as much as possible to allow the snow clouds to get what they need done, done. And basically, a level three is, you have to be out unless it's an emergency. You can be stopped and sent home unless it's an emergency basis. Hopefully, we never get to even a level two this year, but I wanted to put that out for people so that they know what those are.
Is that something that we would ever print in paper?
We have, we do. Both papers have done reports, but I don't know if it's been in this paper yet, I've had several phone calls, so I thought I'd use this opportunity to put it out.
Is that on our website?
No.
Or is that on the site?
And don't forget, you have to shovel your sidewalks one-four hours after the snow stops, it's only shovels only get cleaned up, you don't want everybody getting hurt. That's all I've got in there.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm just taking some photos of the 765 place, getting ready when we can move forward on that, or the demo, get all the things in place for that. Glenn's coming up tomorrow, so we can arrange some paperwork to submit for a drawdown and move the high forward money. And that's probably the main thing we're going to have.
All right. Dennis?
We have some snow, as everybody knows, Public Works guys are doing a bang-up job on that. Prior to meeting, I passed up to council and clerk and mayor and so on, a tentative agenda for the Ohio Water Environment Association, this is the state wastewater group, which we are a member. The northwest section is close to the other side of Toledo and south, as far as Lima, takes our portion of the state. They have four quarterly meetings a year. The spring meeting, this March, March 13th, will be here in Lausanne. As the agenda suggests, there will be tours of the improvements of the wastewater plant, actually the whole plant, but the improvements that we made will be highlighted in that tour. And the educational portion and lunch and so on, technical sessions will take place out of the Junior Fairgrounds building, at the fairgrounds. You guys are all invited, we would need to know if you're going to come for lunch or what have you. And also, as we spoke last year, invested the opportunity to have you all out to the plant and look around. I would be hosting tours for any of you who aren't available to come out that day while they're conducting official tours. Thought we'd maybe tentatively set the date, the following council meeting is on Monday the 18th of March. After that, we could go out and look around if you'd like. I've been working with David and Lisa Aaron on the Latrobe Steel project, also investigating the possibility of seven million revolving loan fund dollars to extend the sewer and so on out there. Lisa's got another avenue that she's pursuing before we go down that road. Estimates for that, there are a couple estimates out there, between 213 and a little over $220,000. That also includes work on the Latrobe side of the equation, so not all of that is just to extend the sewer. We had another bout with frazzled ice out of the water treatment plant Friday morning, when it was so bitter cold, the wind was blowing so hard, where the intakes from the reservoir were iced up for a little bit. We were able to coordinate with the pulling, have them pump and actually blow the ice out of our inlets, structures. Worked very well. And once the, once the ice got covered, the surface got covered of the reservoirs near the intake, everything was okey-dokey the rest of the way. Are working with village marshable and county sanitary engineer, talking about furthering the county's comprehensive water study. I'm going to have meetings later this week with the marshable, the yard, and potential commissioners as well. And I guess I'll, I'll let you, I did want to mention the atrazine lawsuit, there was a piece in the paper about Delta receiving money from a lawsuit on atrazine. We put in for that as well, and I, I'm not Mr. McWhire, just telling the details of that, we did receive a settlement as well. Lastly, I received a resignation letter from Neil Graft, appears that he is going to be moving to Texas. So that's effective, a little paperwork, that's all I have.
Got a quick question, Dennis. When you contact the pulling and waters blowing, pumping water into our, what's the time span from when you guys, okay, let's pump water into Lausanne, what how long does it take for it to officially hit our pumps and start blowing ice out?
Well, they had to. That's bigger than a quick answer. Their water plant was running, so they had to shut down their plant in order to adjust the valves so that they could totally blow water from the intake at the river up at us.
Okay.
I believe they were set up to blend water, where they were taking partial river water and partial water from the reservoirs at the time. So anyways, it was, it was a little over an hour before they were able to start pushing back. But they were, they were doing us a big favor, like I said, they had to shut down their operating and make the changes and so on.
Well, that's great that we got some of that working relationship.
Yeah, but then a couple hours, we were free and clear, and they were back in business and so on.
Okay, great.
Well, I distributed the financial information for January, and I will announce the income tax, I didn't do that comparison sheet, but we were up $40,000 for January. There again, we've seen in the past, I can fluctuate from month to month just based on the day the money came in, so the general fund is doing well and is going well.
Great. Thank you.
Tom?
We seem to have been working some on real estate projects, a number of projects again, and not the least of which is the 401 North Fulton Street. I'm optimistic that we'll have the keys to the place by week's end. The consultant's coming up and doing the final inspection this week. And I want to thank David for, and John also, but David for jumping in and talking to the state about accessing some of those RLF funds. David jumped on that right away, and it looks like we should be able to access those and finish that project through those funds. With respect to the class action lawsuit, the atrazine settlement, this was a class action that was started in some other place in the country, and related to a, the use of, I'm going to lean on Dennis for the actual technical aspect of the case, but it was the use of atrazine for, I think pesticides for crop control, and there was a lawsuit brought, we received, the city received notification that we could be a potential participant in that class action lawsuit, lawsuit, so we submitted a data that they had requested. I talked to Lou over at the plant and asked for the atrazine data that we had, which I don't believe was significant for our area, but nevertheless, we submitted the data thinking can't hurt, and low and behold, in response to that response, we received a small portion of the overall settlement proceeds, which I'm sure was in the millions and millions of dollars nationwide. So, you ever you get those things in the mail where you've received, probably we've all received them, and you want to toss it in the mail? Think twice the next time you get one of those. Yeah, fill it out, and you might, you might be the beneficiary. So, I mean, it was good news twice over for the city, no atrazine, a significant atrazine problem here, but still were able to participate in the class action, we received some proceeds coming in.
That's it?
Yep.
Hopefully this last snap, we talk about 401 North Fulton.
Yes, yes.
Put that behind us.
On the first reading of legislation, Resolution 2013-1 authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ORC, Associates of Florida LLC for real estate acquisition and right-of-way services for the Lenfoot Street rebuild project.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Sturts. Is there any discussion? Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coles?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero knees, Resolution 2013-1 passes on first reading.
There are no second and third readings on the new business. I'd like to have a motion to accept the deployment of Troy Arms going to the Civil Service Commission for the term of January 1st, 2013, to December 31st of 2018.
So moved.
Seconded, Dan.
Motion made by Counselor Coles and second by Counselor Matthews. Counselor Coles?
Yes.
Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero knees, motion carries.
Heather, would you like to talk briefly on that EMA, from the $400 to $600, you talked about this morning?
I can.
Briefly?
The, the EMA has a full board, which is a representative from each township, each village, city of Lausanne, and county commissioners. The full board meets once a year. We have not had forum until this month, this morning we had a full board meeting with all of those individuals present. And the main purpose of that was to elect three of our executive board members to run the monthly meetings and take care of the day-to-day business, and it was also to present to the full board and the townships, the villages, and the city, as well as the county, that we were proposing a fee increase of our assessment fee. The assessment fee is basically for EMA services, and a lot of people have questions about what EMA services are provided to them. So I'm going to be going out to anybody's meetings that request that I come out and speak about the services that EMA offers, and I'm going to be doing that, you know, as often as possible, and, you know, if I hit a township once, it doesn't mean I'm not going to go back, because I think there are a lot of things that we need to keep up with as far as how EMA helps each one of the jurisdictions and the counties. We had talked about raising the assessment fees, which is basically an annual fee that covers different things that each jurisdiction may not want to cover on their own. EMA is required, emergency services are required for each jurisdiction, so they can sign on with the county, or they could do something on their own. However, in reading through some of the things that ORC requires, I don't think there's any jurisdiction that wants to do that on their own. There are just too many requirements, and a lot of them are unfunded. So, we had talked about raising the assessment fee from $400 to $600, there were some other options, as far as using per capita and a dollar amount per capita, and that was based on 2,000 census numbers, and it was going to be way more expensive for each jurisdiction to pay, you know, per capita, nothing than it would be if we just used a flat fee, nothing. So, we took that to the board, and the board did approve that $200 increase. We hadn't had any increase since before 2006, as far back as I could find, and this is going to help the EMA budget as far as some of the grant funding that we're going to be losing, we're going to lose about $29,000 next year in homeland security money that we've had since at least 2006, and even earlier. So, kind of taking a proactive approach. Again, we don't want to create hardship in any of the jurisdictions, and everybody that was at the table was, was in favor of that.
And in other areas, the county blocks way through the EMA funding of, if it was $400 for, you know, the contingency, the county does match it, so it could be up to $29,000, so. This meeting we had this morning is something we've had, been under contract every year, so it's going to go probably $600 bucks.
And you said when the entity pays in, that's matched by the county?
It has been in the past.
It has in the past.
So all of a sudden, there are six villages in the city and 12 townships all get individual, right? It's not all just strictly townships, like, you know, where in Cleveland?
Correct.
It's in Germany, it's the same entity.
Right, correct. And one of the biggest things, sorry, one of the biggest things that this takes care of is our emergency operations plan, which takes weeks and weeks and weeks to put together. And we, we have our plan done, we don't have it approved at the state yet, but we do have our plan completed, and so if there was an entity that did not want to be part of the county EMA, they would have to create their own plan, but it would have to mesh with the county plan, which would be a pretty good task, so.
Just for your information.
If I could add something on the new business, I was privileged enough to sit through a presentation from Ricardis, who's the turnpike guru for the turnpike commission, and he talked about the governor's approach to bonding up the turnpike presence of funds, as you're aware, and he, he stressed that those funds are, hopefully will stay in northern part of the state, and any projects that entities might have, might want to bring those projects to the attention of board members, and Sammy Barber is one of those board members, so I would urge the administration to maybe send a letter to those board members, bring it to light our Lenfoot Street project, and maybe to flex in those.
I've asked that same question, should we maybe bump up our project, close funds, start floating, sooner too? So, yeah, we sure could use it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good question, and I've asked.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and rested council, I have a concern that I'd like to address at this time, that, what concerns me is that before the retirement of Chief Wheeler, he always sat over there and he gave his department head's report, and he, at times he had quite a bit to say, and other times he didn't, like most of the department heads. But what concerns me at this time is that since his retirement, I think we've had somebody represent the fire department one time since then, and I think it's important that someone is sitting here or gives us a report on what's going on with the fire department. You know, and I understand we're going with a part-time chief right now, and that's fine. But what I'm concerned about is, are we keeping up with the reports, are we keeping up with the grants, is there paperwork coming across off? Like, when Chief Wheeler had his office, I mean, I'm sure he opened his mail and looked at things, and I don't know how he did his grants, but he always seemed to have reports a number of times a year about grants, that he was getting money for some of the equipment through the fire department and all, and I'm just, I guess I'm just concerned that, are we staying on top of all that? By, by having part-time help instead of full-time, do you understand what I'm trying to say? I just, it just, I just want to make sure that, that that department is still efficient with their, and we're not missing something, you know, the grant or something. And that's my concern. I would like to see somebody represent by fire department during our meetings.
I understand, Don, that's legit. Fred, I'll ask you, I mean, you're the, you're, is this there or not?
I sent in to the state, or you could go through the state, January 31st, I sent paperwork into the state for grant monies. It's definitely true. I'm working on some more right now, and I've been keeping Major Shaw abreast of what's going on. I did ask a gentleman to come tonight, but he had a doctor's appointment, so, but Mayor Shaw's been abreast of what's going on, but it starts with part of the roads.
And we could, Don, have somebody here, I don't know if it's every meeting, it's necessary, but, you know, we could always, you know, once every other meeting, to keep everybody dialed in.
Yeah.
And, uh...
Yeah, I think it'd be nice.
It's, the fire department, to me, is a big part of this entity, the city of Waseon. I always appreciate it, I always appreciate hearing from all the department heads, and one of those is the fire chief. So I echo a lot what Counselor Matthews says. I'd like to hear what's going on with our fire department.
Yeah, I, I learned things from that report and things that we don't hear, we don't know about as council people. And all of a sudden, you know, we kind of hear it and we can ask.
Fine, we can, we can work on that. Get in.
No, just my concern.
Sure.
Wanted to make sure I brought it up.
That's great. The executive session has been canceled, so motion to pay the, motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion made by Counselor Matthews and second by Counselor Coast. Counselor Matthews?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays, motion carries.
One question before I adjourn. Dennis, can we just pick from the civil service that we already did to fill in Neil Grough's position or?
Actually, that is the way it would happen with the top three candidates.
Whenever the list is consulted, the top three candidates are called back down for an interview and elections made from all the top three. First thing that happens is there has to be a reassignment.
Something you plan on doing there? You can use a man by right, Paul O'Grady.
Our Public Works superintendent has been a strong guy.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Counselor Crum and second by Counselor Coast for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.